Welcome, everyone, to the League of Women Voters Voter Forum for the Fargo City Commission. First of all, just a little bit about the League of Women Voters. We're a nonpartisan political organization that encourages voters to exercise their right to vote and have that vote count. We do things like voter forums and First Friday events to let the community know about what's going on and to get people involved in knowing their candidates. And so, for this forum, we are going to start with a statement by Mayor Tim Mahoney. And so, I would like to -- who is also -- who is on the ballot in the June 12 election is what this is for, and so, I will turn this over to Tim.
Thank you. Welcome, candidates. I remember sitting up there. Great fun to be in the debate. Either I made this job look so hard that nobody wanted to take it, or I lucked out, but I'm happy to be Mayor of Fargo. And I want to focus just a little bit on what's going on in Fargo. We're one of the top-run cities in the nation. We get an award almost yearly because of how we run our financials. That's a well-balanced balance of how we do our revenues and expenses. In addition to that, we have a number of top-bound rating because of that, and because the city does so well in planning that, we do very well. We have a variety of challenges, and my challenges to the community are is we're becoming an urban city. And in becoming an urban city, we have many of the different challenges of crime, people, different things going on in our community. And my platform is to have a safe and friendly environment for people to grow and develop and go through this community. We are in competition with the nation, basically, for people to come in our community. The millennials don't necessarily look for a job, they look for a location. If they like the location, they'll find a job. We have to attract, continue to attract people into our community to help with the unemployment and to help us continue to grow. We're top in egg, we're top in medicine, we're top in education, we have so many, and top in manufacturing. If you look at some of the things our millennials are doing in entrepreneurial areas, we're knocking it out of the ballpark, and we have a lot of interest in this community. One of the initiatives that we're going to work on is the drones. Can we get the drones into this area? Because North Dakota's a perfect area to have drone technology and have testing sites. Other people are working on electric cars, autonomous vehicles, those different types of things in your community. But what I want to look at is the better way of handling our traffic, because they're better getting the flow through the traffic. We're looking at Main Avenue, we might do something to Main Avenue that would enhance Main Avenue, so we have more businesses. Economic development is what we talk about. With that comes some challenges, and we have had some challenges in the last four years that we're continuing to tie to desk. I just wanted to go, specials have come up as an issue, and what happened last fall, we had a gentleman up on Broadway that his specials were $23,000 and came down to $16,000, and we continue to look at that. But what happened is, in 2006, Mayor Furnas came to the city and said, "Let's do a vote on infrastructure." And they had a vote that passed that became effective in 2008, and that's a quarter cent tax for streets, quarter cent tax for water, quarter cent tax for wastewater, and a quarter for flood control. That tax passed out almost 70 percent, so the public spoke. What they wanted is, they wanted some of their infrastructure paid by the sales tax. What happened in 2014, after the build at Sanford, we found that our specials, concrete and everything else, was going up, so the engineers came to us with a new policy which changed the 70/30 spread to a 50/50. And holy cow, did we hear about it. So, this is the year that has finally gone into effect, and we've heard it on Fourth Street, we've heard it from Broadway, we've heard it from all over the city. So, the commission in the fall voted to look at specials. We had our first brown bag, and we looked at new development, we looked at that brown bag, and then we were going to do our second brown bag on what to do in rehab. That will continue to happen. I love the discussion on specials, but it has to be done in a time in which you study it, look at it, look at the effects. So, the commission as a whole will be taking that up after the election, whoever the commissioners are and the previous commissioners that are on board, and we'll look at that. The easy fix right now is to go back to 70/30. 70/30 seems to be what people are most consistent with. That means the city of Fargo pays 70 percent of your tax on specials, not a new development. And then, in addition to that, we oftentimes cap, because there's these unusual variances where some places, we get a real high tax. So, for instance, somebody in Fourth Street has a tax on a house that's worth $220 of $50,000, and that just doesn't really work. Other than that, what I want to say, if you like what's going on in Fargo, we have growth, we have dynamics going on, we have people moving in, we're a hot city. Some people say we got the buzz. So, when you look at that, you have to look at all the things that make that happen. And whenever we change something, we have to be a little bit careful what we change and what we do in that regard. So, everything that we've done so far, we usually will look at, hear the concerns, and then go forward. Flood protection is moving forward. We had a great meeting today with Senator Holvin and Governor Burgum. We're starting the first steps of that. You can tell us that we're starting to make some movement with the DNR. We anticipate having a permit this year, and we anticipate going full bore next year. That's what the public has asked, and if we don't do that, everybody's flood insurance goes up. We have those issues that we have to deal with. We also have different items that are going to happen this year that will continue to go in a positive fashion, and what we'll do is continue to support those. I very much like having a public involved, engaged, and with us, because that really helps us as a commissioner and a mayor know where we're headed. And I'm hoping the candidates, I listened to you last week when you were at Hawthorne Neighborhood, it was fun to listen, new ideas, new possibilities that we can have going forward. Now, lastly, I want my wife Kathy to stand up, because I never get to publicly say thank you to her. And she's been a great support in all of this, and I have more fun doing this. My son is a little disrespectful, but my wife does great to support me. But, good luck, candidates. Anytime you need any information from city offices, please stop by. Many of you are experienced candidates before, and I wish you all luck with this election. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. The next part of the Candidates' Forum for City Commission, we are going to begin with a two-minute opening statement by each candidate, and then, after that, we will be going to questions from the audience. We do have cards and pencils and pens around, so if any of the audience members would like to submit a question, please do. You can ask anything, and if we have similar topics, we might combine questions. But otherwise, if you have a question, write it on your card, hold it up, and we'll probably have Ashley grab them and bring them up here. And then, for that, we'll be rotating. So, the first question, we'll start with Tim Flacco, and go through, and we'll be going in that order with a one-minute response time. We have Barb will be timing, so she'll give you the cues for where it is. And then, we do have the red stop sign, and there is a bell. It goes beyond that. But we will do that until probably a little after eight, and then, we will end with a one-minute closing statement. So, that being said, we will get started with opening statements, and we will start with Lynda Boyd.
Thank you very much. Thank you for hosting this forum. I'm Lynda Boyd. I currently serve as CEO of the Fargo Moorhead Symphony. I was on the City Commission from 2004 to 2008, and I'm currently on the school board, finishing my second term. I'm running for City Commission because I feel that this truly is a pivotal time for Fargo's future, and so, here are the issues that I would plan to focus on as a commissioner. And the first one is housing. Over the past 12 years, I've been actively involved, working on the full spectrum of housing issues. Everything from homelessness and shelter issues through low-income and subsidized and workforce housing, to planning and meeting housing needs of the future. For the past 12 out of 14 years, I've served on the Community Development Committee, which is the group that focuses on the funding from HUD and CBG and neighborhood revitalization and those kinds of programs. As commissioner, I'd focus on which of our own policies and ordinances actually hinder creative solutions to our current needs. As the mayor noted, special assessments and tax incentives play into this as well, and I would propose certainly studying those to see what changes could be made. And workforce issues. We do need to attract and retain people in Fargo, and for this to be an intentional community of choice, not just to grow our workforce, but to make our community better, a more diverse and vibrant place to live. And I would work to ensure that Fargo is truly a welcoming place for everyone, including new Americans. And finally, arts and culture. I would probably not keep my current job if I didn't mention that we do have some catching-up to do in terms of facilities for arts and culture to match what our community already offers for sports and entertainment. So, I would see that our cultural infrastructure is improved and supported. So, I truly have loved the opportunity to serve my community and would welcome your support.
Thank you. And Tim Flacco.
Well, thank you again. I'm Tim Flacco, and I want to thank the League for hosting this event. I want to thank those who are attending and who are or will be watching this at home. But I also want to join the mayor in thanking everyone's families, particularly the candidates' families, because they have to put up with a lot. A lot of stuff on tables, brochures and things, policy papers, and yard signs, and garages, and everything else. So, thanks to all of you who are doing that. You can Google a lot of us, including myself, but I'll go through a few of those. If you want to email me, I'm at tim.flacco@gmail.com. And I also have a survey piece that I've used to help shape what we need to do as we move forward, because I believe in representative government. As you know me, I'm not a single-issue candidate, and I think to be an effective commissioner, I would be, because I have a variety of backgrounds, serving 18 years in the legislature, on a number of boards here in the Fargo Moorhead area, and I'm an advocate for local control, property rights, and also personal responsibility, which is sometimes not talked about. Forums like this can be great incubators of good ideas, as the mayor alluded to earlier. But in referencing that I'm not a one-issue candidate, my five pillars of progress include infrastructure focus. I think we need to finalize the flood protection, we need to have better streets, and look at infill, we need a vibrant economy to make Fargo the economic capital, the creative capital of the Midwest, we need quality city and smart growth as we move forward, and we need safe neighborhoods, because that's really fundamental to what we want, and no one wants to live in a place that is not safe. Good government, low taxes, low specials, that are all fair, and I will always work hard to represent you and be faithful to the wishes of the people, because I think that is very important as you move forward, because I want to make sure that Fargo continues to be on a path of greatness.
Thank you. Tony Garrick, your opening statement. And yes, we are sharing microphones, so make sure you get it really close to your face.
I'll use it against my time, okay? I've got to reach over and move it over. Okay. My name is Tony Garrick. I was elected commissioner in 2015. It's been a lot of fun serving the people of Fargo, and I'm very happy to see so many people here today, and I hope a lot of people get to see this online as well, so thanks to the League of Women Voters as well. You know, since becoming a commissioner, we've had some successes. Before I was commissioner, our budget grew annually at about a 5 percent rate, and over a 10-year period, it doubled. Since I've been commissioner, it's been about a 1 percent growth rate, which is very much better than what it was. But I actually proposed a budget last year that would, for the first time in Fargo's history, reduce the budget. So, that's something to continue to work on. In my first 100 days in office, the budget for City Hall was reduced by $10 million. So, we're going to have a functional, beautiful city hall in the location that we all wanted, but it was $10 million less than what we originally had it priced out at. So, that was a great success within just 100 days of becoming a commissioner. When I first became a commissioner, I wanted to reduce property taxes by 20 percent, and a couple of the commissioners, or at least one, supported that idea. We have since reduced property tax levels by 12 percent since I've been commissioner, and you know, that's a great start, but hopefully, that's one thing we continue to work on as well. I work as the liaison for the water, for the utilities. It was one of my jobs as a city commissioner. And since working with that, we've now sold water to West Fargo. We're selling sewer service to Horace and to West Fargo as well. And the future goal is to expand that region even further regionally to places like Mapleton and other communities that would like to partner with us. And those partnerships don't just happen, it takes face-to-face time with other commissioners, other leaders, and a lot of trust to make those kind of things happen. I'll be a very different voice, I'll continue to be a different voice. There's a lot of 4-1 votes on this commission. I vote against special incentives for special people. I believe in fairness across the board as far as taxes go, and I was the one that proposed a way to end special assessments completely across the board for everyone in the city of Fargo, because there's been a dramatic outpouring. And the good thing about being a city commissioner is, no one else gets to set the agenda. So, while the mayor and others want to talk about this after the election, I'll talk about it now, because I think this is an issue that is impacting real families and detrimental to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Maddock-Johnson.
Well, hello. I'm Liz Maddock-Johnson. I am an educator here in Fargo. I've lived here for about 40 years. I was raised here in Fargo, also have my four children and raising them here as well. One of the things I think for Fargo right now is there needs to be a leadership that's really able to listen to, learn from, and lead collaboratively with the people of Fargo. A couple of things I think are important is, because of my position and because of my work as an educator and also as an administrator in the Fargo Public Schools, I've worked with a lot of the families that are in need of help. I've also have a good idea of what the heartbeat of Fargo is, and it's the people, it's their commitment to their city, it's their pride, and I have that as well. One of the things that has been mentioned here is affordable housing. I think that's a key thing for Fargo to be able to take a look at, taking a look at our equitable resources and strengthening our neighborhoods. The other is to ensure our city's mental health capacities and helping our citizens of Fargo support after they've leave treatment or after they've found themselves in a traumatic situation. I think we have a lot of growth in that area for our city. Working with those families, I know that we have a lot of families that are hurt, and when people hurt, they hurt others. But we have a lot of things that we should be thankful for in Fargo. We have a stellar, amazing school system, we have a Parks and Rec that's fantastic. Moving back from Dallas to Fargo to raise my family, I love that it's warm, it's family-oriented, and people are willing to be able to be involved, and I want to be involved in the decisions to define what Fargo's future is going to be.
Thank you. Dave Pepcorn, your opening statement.
Hi, I'm Dave Pepcorn. I am the deputy mayor currently for the city of Fargo, and I've been a commissioner. This is my eighth year. I'm born and raised in Fargo, so I've lived here 57 years. My wife was a teacher at McKinley, and when we had kids, now she's a stay-at-home mom, and our youngest son is 21, and he's finishing up at Fargo North, so he's going to be graduating this spring, so it's very fun. I love being a Fargo City Commissioner. Everybody here loves Fargo, but I'm telling you, it's a blast. I love being on the commission. It might surprise you, I love asking questions. Some of them, a lot of people don't wish I wouldn't ask those questions, but that's what I do. I think it's a great town, our economy is very strong, our healthcare and education, we have, those are constant performers, and so, we're so fortunate, and we're benefiting so much from things that happened long before us, the Renaissance Zone, all these things. Back 20 years ago, downtown was not the way it is now, and so, we're fortunate. The other thing I will say is, the neighborhood groups that are forming now, that's a great thing. And we're realizing the assets that are especially established neighborhoods are, and so, once again, I love it, man. I hope you vote for me, because every day is a blast. I'm a small business owner, and it's been a great experience. I bought an old crummy building in downtown Fargo and fixed it up, and now, I get offers for that that are unbelievable, and it's just, we're so fortunate that the -- because the one thing I will say is, the downtown is what makes us unique. And the governor was here today, and we are the economic engine for North Dakota and Northwest Western Minnesota. And so, it's no joke, that flood protection, we need to get that done. For us to be relying on temporary flood protection is unacceptable. We just got our appraised value of just the land in Fargo is $15 billion. That's without any businesses or jobs, or -- so, the amount of damage that would be done if we have a flood, and right now, we're, we don't know next year if we'll have a flood. If that happened, it would be catastrophic for the state. And so, that's the end of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arlette Preston.
Hi, my name's Arlette Preston, and I grew up about 60 miles north of here, but I've been living in Fargo for about the last 40 years. I have a nursing background, worked at Sanford/Merrick Care/Saint Luke's for 20-some years, and left there to start a business on my own, which is called Home Instead Senior Care. I've been operating that for the last 14 years, so, just a little background on myself. I did serve on the City Commission between '92 and 2000, and actually, that's when I had the planning portfolio, and that's when the first plan for downtown redevelopment was put together. We brought in a consultant, and then, following that, the Renaissance Zone legislation happened, and because of that, a lot of the redevelopment is happening. So, it is real exciting to see the efforts from back in the '90s actually coming to fruition. I also served on the school board for four years, and what that did, what that taught me, was the strong need for the city, the county, and the park district, or the city, school district and park district to be planning together. That's one of the things that I learned very much. There's a lot of good happening in Fargo. We've already heard about a lot of things, but there's a lot more that could be done as well. So, one of the areas that I would like to work on and help encourage is making sure that we're a welcoming community, that we're inclusive, and that people are welcome to reside here. Neighborhoods, there's a lot of challenges happening right now with neighborhoods, there are building blocks of our community. I'd like to work on some of those issues. And then, finally, there's a lot of plans that are on the table, including the downtown one, but also some neighborhood plans that are in the process of development. It's going to take a commission that is committed and willing and able to work on those inside this infrastructure, inside the structure. I would like to do that.
Thank you. And finally, Mike Williams, your opening statement.
Hello. I'm Mike Williams, and I just want to, I want to thank everybody that's running for a commission. A lot of people go, "Jeez, there's nine candidates." And I go, "Yeah, that's really good. It shows that Fargo is an interesting city where people want to help us, and we all are better together." So, you know, my assets, my greatest priorities are people. I mean, you know, I was just in Norway, and it was so refreshing. In Norway, the citizens there trust their government. They, it's unique. They try, it's not like it is here. The government officials in Norway have earned the trust and respect of their citizens, and the reason is, is because at the end of the day, the policies and actions of the government results in people's well-being. And really, that's what, when we read our constitution and the preamble of the constitution, that's what it's about. So, again, we're better together, we're, community shouldn't be run like a business. Government and community needs to be run for people. We're all better together. It's not just for the bottom line. The bottom line has to be people's well-being, it's not your checkbook. So, that's my number-one thing, is be in a welcoming community where all people have an opportunity to reach their potential and contribute to make it better. We never know where the best ideas are going to come from, and the best ideas should win. That's why Go 2030, Fargo Go 2030 was so successful. 8,700 people weighed in, 160,000 interactions, they gave us their key initiatives, and we need to implement them. So, part of those key initiatives were flood protection and comprehensive water management, that's important. We are not protected yet. We've had severe floods, they keep getting worse, we haven't had one for a while, and we can't relax. We have to finish in-town flood protection and the diversion and comprehensive water management, including water supply. And third is affordable housing. We need to build on existing infrastructure, special assessments are an issue. This is not the first time we've heard it. In 2004, I had a special assessment task force. We've saved millions of dollars, because one of the results of that task force was the city used to take 1.5 percent for carrying costs, now it's 1 percent. That's saved over, it's saved millions of dollars since that time.
Thank you. Now, we will start with our first question, and we will start with Tim, and we're going to, I'm going to combine a few questions on the topic of housing. And so, there's a few statements of how it's difficult for young families with children to find affordable housing near schools, and about how there's more families living in apartments. But let's go with the question, that housing prices are increasing in Fargo. How can we make sure there is affordable housing for all?
Well, I think one of the things that is paramount is that we look at the code and see where in the code we can change things, so we don't have to have mandatory larger lot sizes, because really, a lot of the houses come down to cost per square foot, you know, $104, $120, $150. Finishes change that sum, but we need to give the flexibility to the developers to be able to do that. And also, I think when some of these projects come before the commission, they need to look at having requirements in there. I served in the Fargo Planning Commission, to put it in there that a certain amount of those have to be affordable-type housing, particularly if they're getting some incentives, they need to be leveraged to, in order to do that for the housing market. And then, we need to make sure that we hold down property taxes and specials and other things that really are the hints, you know, thieves of the dollars that people have.
Thank you. Tony.
Affordable housing comes down to responsible spending from the government first. We do that through ending things like special assessments. We lower your property taxes, which we are on the way to doing, we should do it more, and we need to stop giving incentives to special groups. Incentives raise your property taxes, because some people are paying, some people aren't, and we still have to fund things. We, as a city commission, have denied a lot of developments that would offer smaller homes, more compact areas, and we just denied it out of hand, because some people just didn't like it. I think that the market will tell us what people like, and right now, what people like are starter homes. We have 60 percent of our population in apartments, and those people are wanting to come out and own property and have pride in their property. So, we need to get out of the way in that regard and allow those smaller developments to happen. We're also very restrictive as far as zoning goes, so like Tim said, you know, we have certain minimum lot sizes, things like that. Why do we do that? If someone builds a small lot, people buy it, that's what we want. We don't want people in apartments, we don't want to stifle growth. So, in many cases, if the government got out of the way, lowered property taxes, ended special assessments, and then things like that, then I think we would have more homes and more people living in them.
Thank you. And Liz.
Well, I think the city of Fargo housing study that was completed in September '15 had an estimated that was approximately 31 percent of our renters make less than $20,000 per year. So, when we're talking about rental properties, we're talking about our families, we need to take a look at that demographic. I think part of that might have to do with that we have a young population, we're trying to retain some of our college graduates to keep them in this area for our workforce. But one of the things I think is important is, you know, we have these rental units. Rental units don't have to necessarily be apartments, and I think we need to look at, and I tend to disagree just slightly, about incentives of, if you have a rental, to be able to rent to buy, or something, looking along those lines, because we have a lot of people who would like to be into the housing, but they just don't have a way to be able to get into that market right now.
Thanks. And Dave, on the topic of affordable housing.
Well, one of the things, so Lynn Fundingland just retired through the Fargo Housing Authority, and he did a great job, and what's happening is, our senior housing, as soon as we complete a project, they're completely full. And so, what we need to do is build more of those, because there's a lot of people that right now are in a house that would like to get into a senior, a lower-cost housing, but they can't. And so, that's, what's happening is, that's a logjam. There's a lot of houses in older neighborhoods that senior people have bought a long time ago, and now, they've moved to something, but they don't have anything they can afford to. And so, I believe that would be the key thing. And then, I have 30 seconds, so I'm going to go real fast. The other thing is the downtown. There's one way we can improve workforce housing and low-income housing without spending a penny, and that is, all these blocks that are now the cities, when we, we are going to put them out for an RFP, and when we do that, make sure that you have a percentage, either 10 percent, or 15, or 20 percent, required to be either workforce housing or low-income housing, and that's one way that we can, because back in the day, the downtown used to be the home of the lowest-cost housing, and obviously, now with the prices, that has changed.
Thank you. Arlette.
As I've been listening up here, I think all of us are approaching this in a different way and not, and probably defining affordable housing in a different way. I don't think we have a good grasp on what we mean by affordable housing. We don't have a good grasp on what is the entry pricing point for people. Affordable housing goes all the way from rental units all the way up to the more expensive houses. So, just doing a bit of research into really, what are the holes? Where are the holes for affordable housing? And then, working with developers and builders. We may need a more diverse builder group, perhaps, working with them to try to identify probably infill projects where the city might play a role in acquiring lots and helping smaller builders build smaller projects with smaller footprints, so that they're more affordable. There's a few creative solutions I think we can look at.
Thank you. And Mike.
Thanks. And a word is attainable housing. That really sets the deal. You think about somebody that's making minimum wage $15,000, your rent's at $600, is HUD-level rent $650. So, when we're talking about incentivizing affordable housing, we have to be thinking about what are those levels that accommodate people that are making wages? Now, the median wage in Fargo's grown immensely since 2004, and that's good, but still, we're not anywhere near the top in the nation, so wages have to be considered into this, and that has to do with education. So, access to education is a huge factor in affordability. So, when we talk about attainable housing, one of the sets that we aren't making, we call it the missing middle, but like rowhouse
we call it the missing middle, but like row houses that are connected, that have no setback to the street. When you think about these east-west corridors, First Avenue's starting to happen that way, where buildings that are side-by-side basically, parking in the back or underneath, you walk up. And those are not available right now. Those are some houses that are very desirable in other markets and could be here too.
Thank you. The final response on the topic of affordable housing, Linda.
Thank you. Lot of great ideas. I would mention the 2015 housing study that was done that was fairly comprehensive, but it really doesn't show us the whole picture. So what I've been working on with some city staff is to come up with, to pull information from all sources to get a, literally a picture of the full spectrum of housing from homeless to shelter to subsidized, low-income, market rate apartments, so forth, all the way up to new construction. Overlay that with where the needs are in our community and then look to where our public dollars and our incentives are aligning with those. Because I think some incentives are no longer aligned where the needs are. Federal dollars are declining, state housing loan funds are declining. So we're going to have to really get our arms around this and, you know, you really can't build your way into solving the affordability crisis. I think there's, certainly that has a role and we can be creative with what kinds of things we're building. But it really is going to take a multifaceted effort and an understanding of the big picture.
Thank you. For our next question, we will start with Tony Garrig and that will be, what is your stance on approval voting?
Along with Arlette and many others, I was a, someone who sat on that committee act that was not a voting member. I was there for just to watch and see how it went. I was the one who suggested creating a committee to look at these issues. Of approval voting, however, I think it's deeply flawed. I think it opens itself up to strategic voting. I think, I'm still old-fashioned, I guess, when I think of one person, one vote. If there's one, one seat available, you have one vote. If there's two, you have two votes, et cetera. But there's many different types of voting styles out there. I think approval voting is probably the least desirable. And look, to have nine candidates for two spots, like Mike Williams said, that's a good thing. We want this competition. We want to have that, that participation. And one thing I'll throw out there is when people say that, you know, folks won with 16 or 15% of the vote, if there's two spots available, that means that at least 30% of the people voted for them at least once. If everyone in the City of Fargo voted for me and somebody else, I would get 50% of the vote. I wouldn't get 100% of the vote. So I think the math is flawed to justify this. I think that approval voting itself is flawed. There's better systems out there, but there are ways to, we could change our system for the better. And I guess I'll get to that later.
Thank you. And Liz.
Well, I would agree with that. I think the approval voting is something that wouldn't necessarily be in our best interest. But one of the things I think too is, you know, when you have elections that are happening here in summer, in June, you have only less than 10% of the population in Fargo voting, which tells you a little bit of something of maybe we need to take a look at that. I know it's favorable to have it at that time for different reasons, but I also think of a voice for many people would be much better than just 10% of our population giving a voice for an important position that's going to affect the lives and the decisions that are going to be made for the people of Fargo.
Thank you. And Dave.
I'm going to be short and sweet. I oppose it. The American tradition is one person, one vote, and I like to know exactly how many people are voting. I think that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. And Arlette, your stance on approval voting?
I was on the election task force that looked at this issue. And, you know, I think it's probably not a bad thing to do. It certainly wouldn't be a whole lot of expense, except to educate people. The issue in, in it for me is that I'm not certain it's going to probably solve the issue, which is with nine of us running, two of us are going to get probably a pretty low percentage. It creates or it requires basically people to be voting in a different way. So they'd have to change their voting patterns. And I'm not certain that that's going to happen real easily. So I don't know if it's a solution, but it certainly is worth trying, it seems to me.
Thank you. And Mike.
Yeah, and I've already, I'm on the record that I'll sign the petition when it comes around. I don't, it isn't perfect and I do think that it does help with some of the issues that we've had as far as if you have nine candidates and you like three or four of them, vote for them. And they work in our ballot machine. We don't have to make any structural changes for the, with the way that we vote. You just fill in more dots. They're recorded the same way and then the top two vote-getters win. So again, I don't think there is a perfect system. I think that our system can, needs to be improved and I think that it's worth a try.
Thank you. Linda.
I was intrigued by the idea of approval voting and I'm still not 100% on either side of it. I'd like to really see how it shakes out. But I, I thought what intrigued me the most was that the impetus behind it was to find a way that more clearly represented the wishes of the electorate. And if that's our goal, you know, that, that's a lofty goal. Whether this solves that or not, I honestly don't know. I would speak out, excuse me, in favor of having a local, local elections in June along with the primary because there are certainly more voters in November. But I think when it comes to local issues, perhaps they're lower information voters simply because national races completely take all the oxygen out of the room. At least in June, everyone is talking about local issues and there's not really national presidential races to kind of take up all of the advertising space and the conversation and so forth. So I think access is actually more favorable in June for local issues.
Thank you. And Tim.
Well, something I learned just yesterday was that in 1979, approval voting was before the legislature. I believe Senator Holmberg sponsored that, it passed the Senate and was defeated in the House. Something, it'd be nice to see the legislative history on that, but I'm more of a do the primary and then go on to the fall. Some people say, well, it's a lot of work, you know, to, to do it that way. And I'm like, big deal. Commission is a lot of work. And you may as well get used to working hard because people expect you to work hard. But a lot of people that I very much respect are supportive of approval voting. So I'm still listening and learning. I think we need to have a better job of articulating what exactly it is because some people think you have to vote for all nine in rank order. Some people think, you know, you can vote for whoever you want. Some are worried about single shots. So I think there has to be a lot more information out there. And as been talked about earlier, it's always concern from candidates and others, you know, is there a way that people can manipulate how they vote with a single shot currently now versus approval voting or other methodologies?
Thank you. And so for the next question involving NDSU. And so this is, the North Dakota University, university system lost 670 full-time employees from January 2016 to January 2018. With the governor proposing another 10% cut to state budgets, including higher education, what role does the city commission play in advocating for one of Fargo's largest employers, NDSU? Yes, Liz?
Well, being in education, you know, you put your money where you value it. And I have always, I, our, NDSU brings a lot to this community. And so I think the City of Fargo is going to need to take a look very seriously at how it's going to be impacted by these cuts. I know my own personal friends have left the area because they have no position. So they lost their position and left the area, taking their families with them. So it is a, a problem, I think, that we're going to need to take a look at is what is the city's role in helping with these cuts? And I also think too, it's a trickle-down as well. You've got, we have this emphasis on this education. We have the stellar education system in this area. And we need to continue to keep valuing NDSU's input in what's happening in the city as far as our football, our extras that they bring to us. And look at what our role in the city would be to help them.
Thank you. Dave.
I'm a graduate of North Dakota State in 1984. I was a captain of the 1983 national championship football team. I'm a little bit biased. How, and, and the other thing, the downtown campus has had a huge, along with a lot of the other things we've talked about, it's had a huge positive impact on the City of Fargo. However, I, I think it's all right for us to tell the story that we support it, but as far as us lobbying or doing anything, anything like that, I'm not sure that's appropriate. And from my perspective, we got enough things to worry about without us becoming involved with telling the legislature how to run the, the higher ed system. And I, I think they have a, that's a whole nother thing in itself. So I, I don't have any problem with us being supportive, but I, I would not feel comfortable with us actively lobbying or something like that. I, I just think that's a little bit outside of our jurisdiction.
Thank you. Narlet.
The city always has legislative priorities that they are working on during the session. And having this as one of the priorities is certainly a possibility. I do think that there is a role for us on the city level to advocate for one of the major employers in the, in the community. It does impact us and certainly would advocate for, for speaking up when the legislature is considering cuts. However, I have to say, it would be in that list of other priorities and whether it floats to the top or the middle, that would be the challenge.
Thank you. And Mike.
Yeah, I think that there actually is a role for the city for NDSU and working together to show the value that the, the students and having a robust university system brings. Just a few examples, well, think about when the, the school district, the state was not funding the public schools at a, at a level. It was getting down to 35% of the total cost of education when their goal was 70%. This was in 2006 and we, we started a task force with the cities and the schools and we went to the legislature and said, this is where the property tax issue was. Our, our mill levy in Fargo was 326 mills just for the school district. Well, after that, successfully, we reduced the mill levy from 2.3% of the value of your home, $100,000 home was 2,300. Now it's 1.2% because of more state funding for education and people keeping their belts tight locally. I think we need to acknowledge the value and prove the value and bring it to the legislature. Look what the students do for us. Look what our professors do. Right now, our professors can't travel to go out to other conferences unless they're presenting. That's putting a cap on, on intelligence. It's not a good idea.
Thank you. And Linda.
Thank you. You said, I think Commissioner Pepcorn said to tell the story. I think that's where the city can play the most profound role. Because I think legislators are, they have a flood of information coming at them and I think they tend to see things one thing at a time. And maybe what we can do best is describe the partnerships that are part of the lifeblood of this entire community. Our, I can speak from experience that our K-12 robust offerings wouldn't be what they are without the partnerships we have with several programs at NDSU. You mentioned certainly the downtown vibrancy and what the students bring. But we also have tremendous needs. We're, we're a medical destination, but yet there's always hundreds of jobs that need to be filled and to have our higher ed able to fill those needs and nursing and everything else, I think you start, you, you start squeezing the balloon. It doesn't pop out of the places. It just starts to leak and shrink. I, I think NDSU is vitally important and I think we absolutely could help tell that story.
Thank you. And for what role the commission plays in advocating for NDSU, Tim?
Well, in the spirit of transparency, I work for NDSU in part. But I think everyone should advocate for education and higher education, including the chamber, the Bison Caucus, whomever. And that's very important because higher education is vital for our workforce needs, which is vital to the growth and welfare of our community. Certainly, there are specific things that, that we should advocate for, but we have to be a little cautious too as we move forward. So that, that's not our sole purpose. Certainly, other communities, smaller communities like Mayville and others advocate at a higher level. But we do have 25,000 full and part-time students in the Fargo-Moorhead area and that is a big chunk of our economy, whether it's in the downtown or out to West Acres or other places. And it's always good to tell our story. Because be mindful of the fact that legislators don't just have students from Fargo or Castleton that go to NDSU. They have people from literally across the state, across the country, to across the world. And it's vital for us to make sure we tell our story about what we're doing for their student, whether it's from Forbes for Donia or... Stop.
Thank you. And Tony.
I wrote down "it's not" on my paperwork. So like Dave, I'm an alumni as well. I did not play football and I was not a captain on the team or anything like that. But like Tim said, it took you 43 minutes to mention it. Good work. You held off. But we can advocate individually. I, as a city commissioner, can say I think NDSU is important to our community. I can write a letter to my senators or my representatives and say, please do what you can. I think that's our role. We shouldn't be creating subcommittees or groups or lobbyists to go out there and do those things. Local control goes both ways. If we want the legislature, legislature to respect our control on what we, what we do and what we fund, we need to respect what they do as well. And then we have that respect back and forth. So that's not saying that it's laissez-faire and we shouldn't do anything, but it should not be a major focus of ours. We can individually explain how it's, how NDSU is, is important to us and then let them do their job to create a budget that works for North Dakotans.
Thank you. And our next question, we will start with Dave. And that is, do you support strong neighborhood associations and do you regularly listen to neighborhood concerns?
I talked about that in the opening. I think that's been an awesome development. It kind of started in the Roosevelt neighborhood. That started because of the NDSU growth and now several of the especially established neighborhoods are growing. And actually on Saturday, I met with Arlette about, we have some downtown concerns and we're already working on those. And I do think that's going to grow in importance and we're, we're realizing, like I talked at the beginning, the downtown is what makes us unique. I mean, South Fargo is great, but that could be South Rochester, South Omaha, South anything. The downtown and, and the established neighborhoods are what make us unique. The other, the other thing is, that's also the source of our lowest-cost housing. That's the entry-level homes. And so we have lots of good programs with heat, energy efficiency and all those things. And I'm not sure we're having people, especially New Home Bars are aware of all that stuff. So I think we knew, need to do a better job of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Arlette.
Rachel, was the question about neighborhood associations overall?
Um, it was, do you support strong neighborhood associations and do you regularly listen to neighborhood concerns?
Okay.
So yes.
Yeah, I, I certainly have been involved with the Downtown Neighborhood Association, but also the Fargo Neighborhood Association Coalition. And in that, we are looking at some of the challenges that are facing the neighborhoods. Everything from aging infrastructure and special assessments to rental conversions and encroaching multifamily developments. There's a number of things that, that need to be worked on. And yes, the neighborhood associations are what's bringing this to the forefront and actually getting some action taken on them. There's a few solutions that are being looked at. Rental licensure, you know, looking at neighborhood plans getting developed, which would hopefully guide the development in a more clear and, and sustainable way. So yes, the neighborhood associations are terrifically important to the infrastructure or to the, to the inner core especially of the city.
Thank you. And Mike.
Yes, and I support neighborhood associations. They've been around a while and they've done great work. Think about when they were going to close neighborhood schools back in the turn 2000. So Hawthorne and Horace Mann, Clare Barton neighborhood, they all got together, Roosevelt. And those schools are still there and those, those neighborhoods are still vital. So there's work that needs to be done and there's good ideas that come out of these. These, I've been going to the Neighborhood Coalition meetings along with Arlette and some others here. And they have some great ideas. They've been doing some work on best practices in other cities that we can incorporate here. And again, the best ideas win. So we don't have to, it's not always recreating the wheel. We can take best practices from other cities and apply them here. And I think that we can make some real progress and they're a great asset to our, our whole community.
Thank you. And Linda.
As Mike said, the neighborhood associations have been around quite a while and very active. I remember when I was on the commission before, Dawn Mayo, who started as a neighborhood activist, ended up in a supportive position in, in City Hall and she just recently retired. So that was a real time of the city focusing its programs on neighborhoods and supporting the development of new neighborhood associations. And the neighborhood associations provide a really important voice at the table at the Community Development Committee and others, where we're talking about the future of programs that directly affect neighborhoods. And if you think... you think, in particular, the core neighborhoods, you know, Roosevelt neighborhood with NDSU, Horace Mann and Hawthorne with downtown expanding its footprint, NDSU expanding its footprint, and downtown as its own neighborhood with its own issues. These are the neighborhoods that are always on the front lines of change. And it's, it's difficult. It's, our community needs more housing. At the same time, we extol the virtues of more dense housing to be able to accommodate more folks. But it has an impact on neighborhoods. And the neighborhood association folks are helping guide that conversation and make sure that anytime we move ahead, it's, it's with a balanced plan in mind that will preserve the integrity of the neighborhoods.
Thank you. And Tim?
Neighborhood and neighborhood associations are really vital to quality of place in Fargo. I chaired the Downtown Community Partnership, worked with the Downtown Neighborhood Association. And there's a lot of great synergies. I remember we had a bill on, for Business Improvement District. And finally, one of the, they, one of the people came up to me and said, will you get that thing passed? Because I'm tired of my friend contacting me all the time promoting, pushing, pushing, pushing. So it really does have a powerful voice because of that. Whether it's Roosevelt, working with the NDSU student government to alleviate some of the problems they had because of the pressure, Horace Mann, Hawthorne, all great neighborhood associations that should be really spread across the community. And by doing that, they also are a convenor, but they're also can give real-world examples. And they're the heart and soul of Fargo. And those neighborhoods are really, to me, what gives us quality of place. When I drive home on Second Street at night and the tree canopy on 13th Street and Second Street, it's like Norman Rockwell. It is truly amazing. And how could you not want to live in a place like that? It's such a great natural resource. And also just quickly put in a plug, you can't even hardly shovel your neighborhood, your driveways or your sidewalks on time because your neighborhood's ahead of you doing it, if you aren't up early enough in the morning to do it.
You can come to my house.
Thank you. And on the topic of neighborhood associations, Tony?
Yep, neighborhoods are important. And associations are nothing more than a bunch of people who care about where they live. So that's fantastic. I'm going to take it a little bit different direction here. And how can we help preserve our existing neighborhoods? So contemplate this. If you buy, or if you build a new house, what kind of incentive do you get? You get a two-year tax payment. If you buy a house in, say, the Roosevelt neighborhood and you demolish that house and you build an apartment on there, what do you get? You probably get an incentive. If you buy an old house in, in the Washington neighborhood and you stay there and you fix it up and you spend money there and you live there for 10 years, what do you get? You don't get anything from the city. That's, that's for darn sure. So we need to stop giving incentives to demolish these neighborhoods. We're promoting nothing more than renting these places out. And we need to stop giving incentives for apartments altogether. We all, I mean, I think most of us agree that there's plenty of apartments in the city of Fargo. General is important, lowering property taxes, ending special assessments. This will help bring people into these older neighborhoods. My first neighborhood was Lindenwood Park. That neighborhood kind of where Mike lives. It was an inexpensive house. I poured my heart and soul into that place. I put a lot of money into it. And then I gained equity and was able to buy that bigger home in South Fargo that my wife always wanted. So that's what we did. And I think that we've kind of taken that away with, from people. This new generation wants to do this, I think. And we, as a government, can help do that by getting it out of the way in many cases.
Thank you. And Liz?
So I've worked at a couple of different schools in the area where the neighborhood associations were incredibly strong. Horace Mann Roosevelt. Horace Mann is the neighborhood that I grew up in. And it's always been a very strong neighborhood. You identify yourself by the street you lived on. First Street, your second. But one of the things I think is important about the neighborhood associations, and I think this is where the city commission can come in to play, is that we need to replicate that for some of our neighborhoods who are distressed. Our Jefferson neighborhood, our Lewis and Clark neighborhoods, they're spread out, but they need to replicate those same neighborhood associations. And part of the reason why, it goes to what Linda was saying, is that they need a voice in what's happening in their neighborhoods. And in organizing their voices would be in a neighborhood association. And I think the city can play a role in being able to help get those started in the neighborhoods so that everyone's at the table and everyone has a voice for those neighborhoods.
Thank you. And for the next question, we will start with Arlette. And I'm going to combine two here. And so the question is, and there's one that's specific to downtown Fargo, but I'm going to ask the one that's broader, that just is about Fargo in general. But that is, Fargo is a nationally and regionally recognized city with a lot of the U.S. aware of our successes. What is Fargo doing and what should it do to continue its predominance? And we have the exact same question specifically about downtown Fargo. So you can kind of pick where you want to go with it. So Arlette, we'll start with you.
Wow, yeah. It certainly has been predominantly featured in, in a number of different ways in very positive manner. And there's a lot of things that are on the table right now, a lot of plans in the books that really could bring us to the next level. And Mike mentioned Go 2030 earlier. That plan needs to be brought back on the table and looked at. How, how much has actually been implemented and what else can we do? The downtown comprehensive plan is on the table. We need to take that and implement it. We have a public art master plan that's on the table. We probably need to, and we will be, developing some neighborhood plans. So all of those things together can take this community to another level. And certainly some recognition would follow with that.
Thank you. And Mike?
Yeah. So 2009, one of the neatest awards I think Fargo got, we have quite a few, but one was the Association of Planners, picked our downtown as a top 10 neighborhood in the whole country. And that's really a signal that, you know, you're getting people that live, work, learn and play there. And that shows that we're making progress. Another way we can gain, continue this recognition is through, like E. Fargo, we won a national competition with 70 cities for, and we got a $5 million award that is going to be based on values. That is not, it's not a publisher's clearinghouse check. But Fargo has led the way toward, in green initiatives, as being known as a city that's welcoming, being known as a city that has technology, manufacturing, energy, education, and healthcare. We have a diverse economy. And we need to keep focusing on people because people are our greatest asset. If we do that, if we focus on people's well-being, we're going to keep getting more and more people. And they're going to be quality people that want to help build a strong community.
Thank you. And Linda?
I think a lot of this comes down to, and this might sound a little corny, but Fargo values. I mean, there are a lot of cities that have cool downtowns. But when people come to visit Fargo and they come away, you know, we all enjoy reading the articles about how their impression was not what they expected and they had such a wonderful time. And it was, you know, just more diverse than they expected. I think we have to hold on to that and, and cherish that and, and not let that slip away. We have to be intentional about it. And when I look around and I see the next generation of young entrepreneurs and students and leaders kind of breathing fresh life into what that means. I came here in the 70s to go to college. And Fargo has changed. So we all know, it's just, it's just a different place than it was then. And we've changed how we self-identify. I mean, I used to tell my relatives that lived around the country, well, Fargo's kind of a bigger version of Jamestown and it has, you know, nicer stores. And now we identify as, of all the things that we do, that really puts us on the map, whether it's the energy things or the fact that for, for a while there, Fargo was the city with the highest new Americans and refugees per capita. And that is said with a sense of pride and, and how our community is just becoming a much more wonderfully diverse and stronger, more welcoming place to live. I got the first bell.
That's the first bell.
For whom the bell tolls.
Yeah. Thank you. And Tim?
Well, you know, of course, the easy answer is just have ESPN here every year would be a great selling point. But that's not going to happen. Some people thought it would have happened last year, but no. When we brought in Bob, Bob Gibbs, you know, it's just sometimes the little things like, don't let graffiti stay for 24 hours. Talked about promoting quality of place, things like window baskets with flowers, beautification projects, parklets, which are little outlets off the, on Broadway that are similar to what you maybe would see if you were in Paris. I think we also need to look at, whether it's germane or not, aggressive panhandling, because that is something that I see through my experience with the Downtown Community Partnership as one of the biggest threats to our greatness in the downtown. I think if we can, and if we do get the U.S. Bank Plaza finished out, and we get to be like Rapid City where they have 200 events a year and hundreds of thousands of kids are in the downtown, that would be a glorious thing and really add to the quality of place for the entire community. Because what's good for downtown isn't just good for only downtown. It's good for the entire community. And I think from a strategy standpoint, but there's other things we can do, we can talk about later.
Thanks. And Tony?
So this is kind of all we do, right? As a city commissioner, it's kind of encompasses all that we do. So you have to kind of choose what you want to talk about here. But obviously, you know, people are what make Fargo great. The reason my wife and I stay here to raise our son, to work here is because of the community that we feel here in Fargo. And that needs to continue. So how do we do that? Having a business-friendly climate, having jobs for people, having good-paying jobs for people, and encouraging new businesses to come and stay here for long terms. Safety, community safety. I had my car broken into for the first time in my life last year, and that put a bad taste in my mouth. So having a safe community, I think, is, is one of the most important things that we could do. Fire, police. We've made great strides in hiring more of those folks, equipping those folks. And they do a great job for us. Retain talent, having, like I said before, jobs and affordable housing. And government innovation, and also keeping government in its lane. So being the utility guy, I love talking about utilities. We do things like we sell our sewer water to an ethanol plant and we make a million dollars a year doing that. No one else does that around the country. We sell our landfill gas to a company here in Fargo. I think there's only five cities in the country that actually do that. Our water plant is the regional provider with West Fargo and other places using that water. So being innovative, keeping in our lane, doing what we do well, will encourage more people to stay here, live here, and grow here.
Thank you. And Liz?
Will you repeat the question again?
Yes. So Fargo is a nationally and regionally recognized city with a lot of the U.S. aware of our successes. What is Fargo doing and what should it do to continue its predominance?
So let me just clarify a couple of things. One, when I graduated from MSUM, my husband and I were teachers. And to get into schools was very difficult at that time. You have one position, 800 people are applying for it. So the rest of the country is looking for what Fargo's values are. And that is hard-working people who are dedicated to what they're doing and are passionate about doing a good job. So when we moved back, we knew that we wanted our children to be in an area where those values were instilled in you from a young age. So I think Fargo has more than just its values are hard to see until you start talking to people. So Fargo does a nice job of being able to promote itself by just its people. And like Mike said, it's one of our greatest assets. But the other thing too, I think is important is Fargo has to start looking at maybe venturing and continuing these conversations of being a more inclusive community. We have, when we moved back, we've noticed the changes as far as building. But we also noticed the changes as far as Fargo had become a more diverse area, which made me happy because I knew that my kids would be able to get a taste of what the real world is beyond North Dakota. And so I think that's an important thing that we need to look at and continue with those conversations.
Thank you. And Dave?
Okay, here we go. The first one is the Civic Center. Mike and I were the co-chairs and now I'm the chair. The mayor reconstituted it. That's going to be awesome. We're going to redo the Civic Center, 2,500 seats. It's going to have Linda's orchestra performing in there. It's going to be busy 250 nights a year. Because we're, we are a very young city and very well-educated. So our studies showed that's, that's what, that's what people are looking for. So that's the first thing we're going to do. The second thing, here's a good idea. Another Renaissance Zone from 13th Avenue to 32nd Avenue on University. The Renaissance Zone has been great. And so that is a successful model. We should be doing the same thing because that neighborhood is, is heading that same direction. Don't ding the bell yet. I got lots of stuff to go. One of the cool things Mike and I are working on tomorrow morning at 7:00 in the morning, the Pocket Parks. We talked about that. The first one is going to be at Dempsey's. And it's kind of awesome. Our first meeting was last Friday, I think. And so they already pulled the shrubs. And so it's already, and I, I will not admit this to my wife, but Dempsey's is my favorite place to go. So if I'm not here, that's where I'll be. But that, those Pocket Parks are awesome. And so what it's going to be is there's going to be a stage and a place for people to just hang out and sit and all that stuff. So that is, that's very exciting to me. The Mid-America Steel Site, that is, that has the potential to be, we don't even know. But the amount of redevelopment, to me, that's my wheelhouse. The thing that's the most fun is, what's this downtown going to be in the future? Because right now, it's basically all summer fallow. It's, all these parking lots are empty and it's put, I'm sorry, I got the bell. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are moving on to our next question. We will start with Mike. And that is on the topic of boundaries. So the question is, can we consider Fargo boundaries now set? Or do we need to annex more communities to Fargo?
Well, that's kind of my wheelhouse. But land use is a big issue with the city of Fargo. I don't think we realize how spread out we've gotten. We had, in 1960, we had eight sections of land with 50,000 people, 10 people per acre. So this was the core. We had 10 people per acre. Traditional neighborhood design. These aren't skyscrapers. These are just regular, single-family homes and a little bit of mixed use into downtown. We had more, thousands more people living downtown then than we do now. We have got down as low as 2,000 people. Now we're up to 5,000 people. Our goal is to get to 15,000 people in these flat surface parking lots that just sit empty half of the time. They're low-value. They're economic craters. So again, land use, we don't need a lot more land, just to, right now, we're at 3.5 people per acre. Houston is 5.9 people per acre. We're less dense than Houston, which has 627 square miles. We need to do better with, we talk about special assessments. We need to build and encourage development and mixed-use development where we have existing infrastructure and repurpose these flat surface parking lots that are economic craters.
Thank you. And Linda?
When I was on the city commission from 2004 to 2008, that was kind of the bad old time for annexation battles between Fargo and West Fargo. Because both communities were, especially Fargo was trying to preserve a growth corridor. And we thought at the time, we needed to preserve a corridor going west. We also, as a city of Fargo, was trying to plan in the future for flood protection. A diversion wasn't even on the table at that point. We were planning for how a local diversion, how far we would have to need access for that. And so that really drove a lot of the annexation efforts. Our footprint is, is plenty big now. We have enough land in Fargo to grow for many decades. What's interesting is planning for infill as a city where you really want contiguous development. And a long ago, discussion I had with a former school board member, where schools need to be planning 100 years out. Because as we can tell with buildings that you can't pick up and move, so neighborhoods have to have their school boundaries changing to adapt. I think we're actually on a, on a good trajectory right now. If you look, there's not much more infill left north of 52nd. So we are at the point where we can, we can accomplish that contiguous infill and stay within our boundaries.
Thank you. And Tim?
Well, I think we need both a combination of infill and new growth. I don't know that there's enough infill by the data I've seen to accommodate all of the growth that is there. When I was on the Fargo Planning Commission, I think we were in, doing about 500 acres a year. And we were trading, you know, land back and forth, as was cited earlier with Fargo, West Fargo and Fargo. But the diversion will largely define our footprint as we move forward. Wherever that finally, finally, finally lands. One of the things that will be of interest is, in the upcoming legislative session, there will be a bill introduced that will require schools to gain approval by the city if they're going to build a new school within that city. Because of the cost of infrastructure and it's kind of that balancing act. We're in schools, have to approve Renaissance. They're looking at having the schools have to gain approval from the city. So something just to watch as you move forward. And I don't know that that's widely known yet, I'm guessing. But that's something that will also dictate what happens.
Thank you. And Tony?
Diversion will define our borders. I don't know how you get around that. We're not going to build aside of the diversion in order to have more places to grow. We haven't been overly aggressive with ET since I've been a commissioner. I really remember a time where we actually claimed more territory since I've been on. So I think we're doing a pretty good job of that and maintaining what we have already. We have done some swapping with West Fargo and other places to make more sense of it. I want to make one point, though. Infill does not mean downtown. It's not the same thing. You can infill on 32nd Avenue South. There's open spots. You can infill on Main Avenue and go towards the interstate. There's a lot of open spots there. So I want to get this out of people's head, that when we say infill, it has to be downtown. That we must, if we are to subsidize or incentivize infill, it must be downtown. Dave mentioned it before. We can move that Renaissance Zone. I think it's about time we do that if we are to I think it's about time we do that if we are to keep it, which we're necessarily in favor of, but we need to move it to be sure. Last thing I'll say is subsidizing sprawl is what special assessments do. If you want that to slow down or stop, you need to stop subsidizing it and making it free for the developer to basically put that underground in and passing that bill on to the taxpayer. It is one of the biggest reasons that you have seen leapfrog developments in the City of Fargo, and it's an easy fix. And I have the plan to do it, and you can come see it at my website, tonygarrick.com.
Thank you. And Liz?
So we've done a lot of talking about downtown, but if your favorite place is Dempsey's, downtown's my favorite. Wherever I eat, I'm fine, as long as it's downtown. One of the things I think is important, and you brought that up, is 13th through 32nd. And that neighborhood, those neighborhoods that are affected, there's three or four different neighborhoods that are going to be affected, Lewis and Clark, Lincoln, Claire Barton Hawthorne, Jefferson, and then moving toward 32nd, that's going to shift some of that from Eagles and Centennial. So actually, more than just four.
And Egg Club, yeah.
Yeah. But one of the things we talked about is infill. I think we've got a lot of older neighborhoods that are ready to flip. We have a senior housing problem that we need to address because it's filling up, and we need to be able to be thinking ahead for our baby boomers that are just about to try to sell the house and move somewhere else. The infill, I think, is an important thing to be able to be looking at in our neighborhoods that will be impacted by this Renaissance, 13th through 32nd, because that's going to be, I think, if you look now population-wise, that's the heart of Fargo, could very well be, and not trying to take away from downtown Fargo, but that's going to be a place where we're going to have to make some major changes, and that'll affect the neighborhoods there.
Thank you. And Dave?
So one of the frustrating things, and for Mike and I especially, the parking lots in the downtown, right now, all of us are subsidizing the landowners to hold those. They don't pay any, they pay very low taxes, and so they're allowed to let them appreciate, but they're not paying any taxes. And so what we're doing, right now, we're working on our utility fees, updating, and so it will be a way to charge them because asphalt parking lots don't obviously hold very much water when it rains. And so we are going to start charging them more, and this should have been done a long time ago. But I do think that will help a little bit, and I'm going to veer way off the thing. Us as taxpayers should not accept West Fargo and Fargo Public Schools being separate. They should be combined. Because when you start building schools that are like blocks apart from each other in different school districts, and there's shortages, that's our tax money. And so I know that's not our contest, but I'm telling you, man, we would save so much money, and you know where the money would go? From the administrators to the teachers, and that's where it should be. And that's the end of my school board election talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlette?
I do think the City of Fargo is starting to move from kind of, I guess I would call it, uncontrolled sprawl to more of a controlled development plan. However, we still have a lot of work to do to make sure that our growth is sustainable and so that it's smart growth. When I was first on the commission back in the 90s, Centennial was built, and it was built a mile away from everything else. It's not only the schools. I mean, there's lots of empty, large, empty spots in town. Every time I drive by one, it drives me crazy because all that infrastructure that has been built around it, we have all paid for that, and we're not gaining the benefit of increased property value in those empty lots. So infill is terrifically important. We have to align the incentives so that those infill projects happen, and then just more dense development is something that needs to happen. So those would be my thoughts about the boundaries.
Thank you. And the next question, we will start with Linda, and that is on special assessments. So what do you think is the best way to handle special assessments, and if we eliminate them, how will the city get enough revenue to take care of infrastructure?
So we're still talking 60 seconds, is that right?
Whatever you can do, before the bell.
I'll try to talk as quickly as, so it's Tony. We first need to think of new construction special assessments separately from repairing existing infrastructure. And let me focus on that. One advantage I have to being married to a retired CEO of a civil engineering firm that operated in four states is I'm learning about all sorts of ways that are proven to work in other communities that really do not do special assessments like we do, which is really socking some homeowners in a really narrow corridor to pay for repairs. So those are some ideas I would be happy to bring forward and show a winning track record with that. As for new construction, I think there are certainly different ways to approach that, that right now, it is quite a benefit to the developers. And I think homeowners, especially maybe newer homeowners, don't understand that what looks to be a $250,000 house, actually two years down the road, is going to have taxes, and the specials actually is part of the cost of the house. And I think it really needs to be looked at differently and perhaps financed differently.
Thank you. And Tim?
Well, I think, and I'll be coming out with a plan on specials that actually will save everyone who has specials money. It's not about renaming them or redistributing them, but it'll actually save people money because you have to get at the source of the cost of specials, and there are a number of things that lead to that. One being, as the mayor talked about, when they went from 70% being covered by the city through dedicated sales tax, we need to go back to that as opposed to 50-50. The other thing is, the city should not be using specials as such a fundraising tool as they have in the past. That's very important. Specialists have gone from $3.7 million in 2015 to $24 million in 2017. So that's why you need to start upstream and get to the source of those costs. There's better materials that can last longer, that like the UK uses, that lasts 10 times longer and are 60% more durable than what we have. 24% of the people don't pay specials, and we must make sure that those who have already paid off their specials, especially seniors and those, you know, growing families, aren't further burdened by the cost of what it has. And then using the legacy fund will help us also.
Thank you. And Tony?
So I won't try to explain my plan in one minute. What I will say is that you can go to it, tonygarrick.com, and read the three-page document. It's pretty straightforward. What the plan does is it makes a predictable tax rate instead of an erratic one that's very expensive and dangerous for families. It also lowers your payments. This is not putting one penny in the other pocket, which has been suggested. This will lower your payments, and it's an easy way to do it. You'll be able to build equity in your home instead of renting your infrastructure. So any special assessments is important. That's how you build equity in your home and not just rent it from the city. It will stop, or help stop, the sprawl that we've already talked about. And Fargo has $400 million in debt due to special assessments right now. $400 million in just special assessment debt. That needs to stop. We're playing the bank and taking that role away. We should put that back in the private sector and stay away from it. The 70-30 vote that everyone's talking about, it was a 4-1 vote on the City Commission. I voted against it. I told people at that meeting, I think Mike was still on the board at that time, that this will raise your taxes. Make no illusion about it. This will raise people's taxes. Everyone knew that going in. Everyone voted for it but me. So when people want to look around and blame somebody, you look at the City Commission, we knew what we were doing, we raised your taxes, and now we're sorry, and we're going to fix it for you. It's time to end special assessments.
Thank you. And Liz?
So I agree that there's no immediate quick fix for it, but I do agree that going to the 70-30 would be a way that we could at least get to a point where we could start to discuss what we need to do with our special assessments. One of the things I think, you know, Tim brings this up, and I laughed last time he brought it up, the plastic roads, I had the article sitting right there. I had looked it up three weeks before we came to that forum. And I think there's a lot of things that we need to start looking at. These older neighborhoods are the ones that are docketed next, I'm sure, for infrastructure. I live on a street that probably could use a little help. So those new, those old neighborhoods, we'll be looking at infrastructure, and so we need to be thinking about, well, how can we make the materials, or how can we do these infrastructure building projects to last longer and to be able to help us get into more of a green renewable resources. You brought up plastic roads. There's also wind trees that don't have to use the turbine to make noise, and there's lots of different things that are coming out that we could easily be using for our city to maybe cut costs and then to be able to start to take a look at, well, how could we address these special assessments and start looking at making changes? Linda had brought up other cities. I know Sioux Falls does it very differently than we do, and it's been successful, but taking a look at some of these other cities where that's working for them in a different way.
Thank you. And the topic of special assessments, Dave?
And obviously, it's a real issue, and one of the issues, and I do think that changing it back, that will be the easiest fix. I think the commission will vote on that, and we'll change that fairly quickly. The other thing is, in the older parts of town, the arterials are closer together. And so that's also what, so I live in North Fargo, and I've been hearing it, especially on North Broadway as an example, because the roads in the older parts are formed differently, the specials are much steeper. And the other thing, I think the most residents aren't against paying some specials, but if it's level, and what's happening now is just because you live on an arterial, it can be three times as much as somebody living the next street over. And so that's, we're all aware of it. Dan Ebberhard is our staff member in the back, and we are all aware, and we're working on it. And so there's lots of good ideas, and I do think that it's a serious issue. However, I think we need to be very careful. Just because we changed something, we wanted to make it better, not necessarily just make a change to make a change. And I will say, what's happening now is a young couple, if the specials are financed through the city, you can buy more house. That's what it boils down to. And the whole thing about us warning, that's true, or the Realtor should be warning you, but what's happening now is you can buy more house because the city is basically helping with that financing. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlette?
Yeah, there's actually two different issues with this discussion about special assessments, new construction and then reconstruction. It's the reconstruction that is causing a lot of angst right now because of the arterials that are getting built and the neighborhoods actually having to pay for those. I really believe that any of the arterials, really the local property owners probably should not be paying anything for those. We should be looking at those as part of the whole city-street grid. We all drive on those. So at some point, it would be really nice to pull special assessments away from any and all arterials. Second item being new construction, there's different options for funding or financing infrastructure, and right now, the city is giving kind of a sweet deal to all of the developers because we're basically carrying the bill for the infrastructure. It also then, I think, probably, as was mentioned, it incentivizes larger footprints to the houses, lower density. It incentivizes a number of things. So moving the financing for infrastructure back on the developer probably would be a good idea.
Thank you. And Mike?
Thanks. When I was first elected in 2004, we had a blue-ribbon task force, Clay County, Cass County, City of Fargo, Moorehead, West Fargo, Dilworth, and the idea was to get a handle on special assessments. So we had a consultant from, he'd worked with Jesse Ventura. Anyway, they didn't use special assessments for new construction. Most cities use it for rehabilitation. That's how it was in Fargo, and we should get back to that. Specials were caused or created when interest rates were over 15%. There was no building going on in the city. Came up with an idea to help spur that development. The vote to go to 50-50 on specials happened in 2017. I wasn't elected in 2017, so that was a different vote. So I'm not sure where that's coming from. But anyway, I agree that special assessments for new developments should be on the homeowner and the developer because actually, it creates additional costs for engineering and administrative fees, and I do think that we need to work the way we spread special assessments for rehabilitation in a way that's spread more broadly. So there is work to be done. I commend Commissioner Garrick for bringing it up. I think it's a topic that has just not been handled well over, for many, many decades now.
Thank you. So our next question, we will start with Tim, and that is on the topic of transportation. And so this question is about downtown parking and how there's a view that there is very little parking downtown. And then also, what are your thoughts on futuristic alternative transportations such as bike, buses, et cetera?
Well, Fargo clearly has and will continue to benefit from all of the above strategy, and we need to make sure that they're all available. There are a number of things, and people often forget that Robert's Garage is now open, and that is a great asset if you're just talking specifically in the downtown. The Island Park parking ramp has a lot of availability, but for some, they're not really wanting to walk that far. One of the things that's really helped, and thank you to Senator John Casper for introducing the legislation, was when we brought in the ability to have Uber and Lyft, that was a transformational change for people in the downtown. I come down every Sunday morning, it seems like, to have some coffee, and you see the number of cars that are there. So they've made a conscious decision, rather than, back in the old days before that, there was four cabs that maybe would be servicing the area. They wouldn't wait. They would get in their car after they've often drank too much and try to make it home. But because of that legislation with Uber and Lyft, now police officers and others don't have to tell parents, your son or daughter was involved in a tragic accident. And that type of thing is vital to what we have. I was one of the first person to cut a check for the bike share through Tri College, and all those things are in a mix. We have to look at, as I said earlier, with the buses, they've dropped 200,000 rides in the past two years alone. We need to diagnose that.
Thank you. And Tony?
Parking downtown should be privately funded, just like parking is all over the city. Imagine going to Dwayne's Pizza down in South Fargo or the Shack in North Fargo. They pay for their own parking, and downtown should be expected to do the same thing. Transportation as far as map bus and, you know, the bike shares, the bike paths. I think we do a good job of those things. We can do more, but we'll work on that, and we have been. Those are good for the community, and people do use them. Some things we don't do so good at, I don't think we need bike lanes in every road, and I think most people have come around to that way of thinking. Main Avenue, we were thinking about putting a bike lane there two years ago. Now we're not. That's a good plan for that. Uber and Lyft was mentioned. You know, the City of Fargo, I think people forget, tried to block that. The taxi lobby got ahold of some of us, and it almost worked that they tried to block it, found out that we couldn't because of state law, actually blocked those from coming in. So I'm glad the community let us, or we brought them into the community, and they have been beneficial for people downtown or everywhere else to get home safely. So there are certainly some things we do well, some things we could do better, but I think there's plenty of options in the City of Fargo to get around. Yeah.
Thank you. And Liz?
So we're talking future, too? Yes. So if you look at the Go 2030 Plan, it's top 10, and I've said this before, but the top 10 things, two of them have to do with transportation, in particular with bikes and with a city trail. So I know the city has done some things to be able to address that, but like Arlette said, I would like to be able to look at our 2030 plan and see what have we accomplished and what do we need to do to be able to get these things. That was a huge input from the community, and I think we need to respect that they had that input. As far as for the future, might be a little bit out there, but taking a look at our railway and finding out what, how better we can service the railways here in town. I know that they're traditionally run through the town, and I know they traditionally do all those things, but to take a look at maybe rerouting or taking a look at what could we do to change that. I don't know if that's feasible with all of the development, but the other thing, too, is I know we have our map bus and we have our Lyft and Uber, which many teachers are your Lyft and Uber drivers. That's something to be talked about later. But to take a look at where that goes in the future for Fargo. I know NDSU has a new transportation plan up at NDSU that they've implemented this year, and taking a look at how better those can service our city.
Thank you. And Dave?
I'm going to talk about, so the Main Avenue project, actually on Monday night, there's a public meeting, so if you want to learn more about it, I would encourage you. That's the next opportunity for us to change. Obviously, Broadway now, it's pedestrian-friendly, and the traffic is slower, and there's lots more bikes and walking and activity. And so if we want that to happen, south of Main Avenue, we're going to have to make a change there. And so that is going to be, it's not going to be very popular, I predict, but if we don't change it, it's going to stay the way it is now. If we, the five lanes, it's basically undeveloped between, on the north side of Main Avenue. This is our opportunity to change that, and it will be all the way from the river, all the way to university. That is a tremendous opportunity. There's so much land. When we talk about- That is a tremendous opportunity. There's so much land. When we talk about infill, that potential there is fantastic. And then one more, I'll talk real quick about the small cell technology. I don't know if anybody even knows what it is, but the cellular phones, Verizon wants to come in and have these small cell towers in the downtown. And what concerns me is, they're not invisible like some of the cell towers we have now. You can see them. And so to give you an example, in the downtown, there would be 40 of them, and we're having a challenge as to how much to charge them per pole. But the thing that concerns me is, you set a precedent, because there's three other phone companies, and if all of a sudden you have not 40, but 120, or it's going to be a lot of clutter. And when Tim talked about the trees, I've been fighting the battle. I will make this promise to you, we are going to make XL bury the power lines, because they've been butchering our trees. It makes me cry in the wintertime when you drive by, and that, they can do it, they would rather not, but we're going to make them.
Thank you. Arlette?
Yeah, I think to address this issue, we all, we have to certainly look at all of the options for public transit, biking, walking, whatever we can do to kind of ease the parking situation. You know, we are, we are a car-focused society, and what we need to get towards is more of a pedestrian-focused society. And that's a cultural change. It's going to take a long time. So in the meantime, changing some of the small things, such as, you know, probably parking fees. Right now, the city cannot put up parking meters because it's against state law. It's really silly. But if a person has to pay for parking, perhaps they'll consider transit or a bike. So there's some things that I think we could do to encourage alternatives to cars and explore those options a little bit further.
Thank you. And Mike?
So in Fargo, MetroCog determined that 27% of our residents' income on average, not everybody, is spent on transportation. That's more than 24% on housing. So when we talk about affordable housing and infill and efficiency, where we choose to live and access to more modes of transportation, whether you can walk, bike, or bus to where you live, work, learn, and play, matters. So mixed-use development neighborhoods that have some mixed use in them, so you can walk down to get your Snicker bar instead of having to drive, that's all the components of it. When we talk about, you know, some of the success we've had for the sharing economy is, we've almost tripled bus ridership. It's been flat now since 2014, but part of that is because of the success of Bike Share. In 2004, we had 80,000 student riders. Now we have 1.1 million with 2.1 million total rides. That's sharing economy. Bike Share is the best in the nation. We do more rides per bike per day than any other city in the country. Austin, Texas, Texas University is using our system now. They're starting to blow the doors off of Bike Share. So we're paving the way for a sharing economy where we can reduce that cost of transportation so they have more money to spend on their house. If you don't drive, if you have one less car, it saves you $9,000. That pays a mortgage on a $130,000 house.
Thank you. And Linda?
This is one of those topics where I really don't like being the last person to answer, because, you know, everybody has really mentioned the importance of all modes of transportation. I certainly agree, and we have made some really promising progress. I'm left thinking about transportation as one of those things that I think we need to be ready to adapt a future mindset. You know, change is happening so exponentially fast in technology that today, we're a car society, but who knows how fast that will change? I mean, just a couple of years ago, the idea of a self-driving car was still science fiction, and now some idiot moved over into the passenger side. So maybe that set that back. But I think we just have to have a governing culture of being ready to adapt to change quickly. Sometimes I think our policies lag far behind reality. And so to have, to have a nimble approach to adapting to change. So as Lyft and Uber came in, for example, I think once we made it past those roadblocks, we were ready to accept it, and it's already changing the face of our community, just as the incredibly successful Bike Share is. So I think just a culture of being able to adapt quickly.
Thank you. And our next question, we will start with Tony, and that is, regarding combining school districts and other services of Fargo and West Fargo, should that be the goal or vision for the future of our metro area? Why or why not?
I tend to agree with Dave when he talks about the school district. Unfortunately, I have no control over that, so I'll move on to other ways that we regionalize, like I've mentioned numerous times. I am the liaison for the utilities, and that's our goal. We want to be the regional provider for all utilities in the area. With the water plant, we're now selling to multiple cities, and we're making millions and millions of dollars doing that. And it takes partnerships to do that. That's been a goal of ours for a very long time. It just hadn't happened yet. So I sat across the table from commissioners from West Fargo, and I said, "I promise you that we will treat you right. Here's the contract. Here's the deal in place. You can trust me, and let's work together." And they did, and it's been a wonderful relationship, and it led to the sewer deal that we do with them now. The sewer deal is actually bigger than the water deal is. So we're regionalizing our assets as far as a sewer plan goes. We've always regionalized our landfill, of which we sell, again, natural gas off of that, but everyone brings their gas, or excuse me, their garbage to us. You know, there are different ways we can do things. I really wanted to do a recycling deal with Moorhead and West Fargo as well. That did not work out. But yes, we need to work with our partners. Like Dave said, with the schools, we're wasting a lot of manpower. We're wasting a lot of hours. We're wasting a lot of our assets because we're doing separate things. I actually want to regionalize the fire department. That's a goal of mine going forward as my next run, as the next term as city commissioner. So hopefully that works out, and we can find other ways to partner with our neighbors.
Thank you. And Liz?
So to address the combining school districts, so coming from the Dallas area, starting my teaching career there, coming from a large school district, I cannot possibly see how the money would trickle down to teachers. I'm just going to be honest with you on that. And to have a large school district with that many schools takes away some of the small neighborhood-ness of these schools. Being an administrator and an educator for over 25 years, listening to families in the last couple of years, especially being on the accreditation team for City of Fargo, and going into different schools and interviewing parents, parents love the fact that they have a neighborhood school and that it's small. So combining the school districts, I would be opposed to. The second thing is, I think we need to take a look at some of the things that we can share, and one would be our waste. The solid waste that we have, our landfill, needs for us to change some of our patterns and some of the things that we're doing. That might be something that we could share with other areas around here. But that's one thing I think that we need to take a look at. And then the other, and I'll keep saying it over and over again, there is no reason why City of Fargo cannot go green. We have an unlimited tap of wind. If you were around the last few weekends, you'd know that we have wind that, we need to take that potential and use it for our city.
Thank you. And Dave?
So I did not plant that question. That was kind of ironic, because I already talked about that. I think it's easy to see how you'd save money. Instead of two superintendents who get paid maybe $100,000 to $200,000, you'd have one. That's saving money. All the duplication, everything, it would be a phenomenal amount of money, and that would go to the teachers. So I would be in favor of it. I'll just talk a little bit about the whole, Tony talked a little bit, too. What we want to become is, we want to become the provider of water for the county and wastewater for the county. The other thing that I think we should start looking at is approaching Moorhead and treating their wastewater. That's what they do in East Grand Forks. They send the wastewater to Grand Forks, and they treat it. And so we will be working on that in the future. The other thing, the mayor and I, it's the Lake Agassay Water Supply Project. It's getting water from Garrison, the Garrison diversion, you know, from Lake Secocawea to Cheyenne, and then eventually to eastern North Dakota. That is, that will probably be one of the biggest projects that will be in our lifetime. And what that will do is, instead, in a drought, instead of having just the Red River Basin, we would have the Missouri Valley Basin. So we would never have to worry about drought, and economically, that would be huge. And so the legislature supports it. All of eastern North Dakota, not just Fargo's system, would benefit from this. And it's a billion-dollar project, but it will be revolutionary, and so that's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Narlette?
I think up to this point, Fargo actually is doing a lot of regional supply of, say for instance, the landfill. The landfill's being used by other communities. Our water plant is the source for water for other communities. Our wastewater treatment plan is also being used by other communities. So we are doing a pretty good job with regionalizing things that way, and it certainly can be expanded. But one of the things I think that we've not talked much about is, how can we, as a larger community, come together and actually bring things up to the next level? For instance, with the school district, we talked about a magnet school, probably a joint magnet school between the two districts, because it's difficult for one district to do that. Perhaps alternative energy source development, that might be something that we'd want to do across communities. Perhaps an additional water source, being the western side of the state, that would be another regional kind of effort. So there's other options and other creative solutions that we could look at as a region.
Yeah, I think that combining the school districts is something that should definitely be looked at, and even if there was different political boundaries, some cooperation on where schools are built. In Fargo, we worked real hard for two sessions to get the vote before public schools are built. The last two schools that have been built are infill schools. Thankfully, Ed Clapp, I suggested that to John Strand, and that got built between the library, and then also the Eagles Elementary was expanded. Put schools where the kids are, not where you follow developers into green fields where, and use schools for bait. When we talk about 75 acres for a school site, I was just out at Georgetown University accepting our prize for E. Fargo and sharing how we did it with the student leaders that really did, made it happen. The whole James, or Georgetown University main campus is 75 acres. How do you need 75 acres for a school? And yeah, there might be a park there, but look at Clara Barton, look at Hawthorne, look at Forest Man, look at their footprints. We don't need that much land for schools. There's room for schools where kids are. So again, we need to share resources. When I started in 2004, I got to give credit where credit's due. In 2004, we weren't taking garbage from West Fargo. They were home at the Gwinner because of petty ante stuff. Bruce Scrub, our city administrator, has made all of these things happen. We're just here and helping him.
Thank you. And Linda?
Well, combining school districts seems like a good idea. It would actually not save very much money. We've looked into it, and it would really be incredibly complex. Sure, you would have one superintendent instead of two, but school buildings still need principals and so forth. I think what, it makes sense to have a desire to save money through cooperation. And maybe we need to do a better job of telling the story of what we're already doing. So for example, the Career and Tech Ed Center that has one shared administrator serves nine high schools in five communities. And so kids are getting really robust offerings that they wouldn't get if we didn't have that kind of cooperation. We do things with West Fargo all the time. We do collaborative training with West Fargo and Moorhead. So combining the districts where, right now, the taxpayers in each community have accountability. They voted for bonding. How would you bring those together? So I think there are other ways to really achieve that desire to get maximum quality for the taxpayer dollar through collaboration.
Thank you. And Tim?
And I just will say that I agree with everything that Linda said, so I'll cut out some of mine, but there are tons of shared programs between the districts, and also within the region. We have Regional Education Association, where some of the nuts that both come down to is the trouble with debt service on new buildings. You know, you as a Fargo resident, you want to pay for a proposed new high school in West Fargo. There's also a significant difference between the number of mills between the two. Certainly, you would save superintendent salaries, but I think our goal, as was talked about, I chair the Midwestern Higher Education Compact, and we actually get more money from outside funding sources than our member dues are. And Fargo continues to do an ever better job of partnering up. And just for the record, it's great that both the mayor of Fargo and the mayor of Moorhead are sitting out here tonight, and I really appreciate that. That's been a great partnership that will, you know, need to go on when Moorhead gets a new mayor. But things like buying power and treating water, bringing water in from the, there's a ton of opportunities that the city can look at, whether it's professionals in the police department that are specialists or other things. So, thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we will start with Liz, and that is, as an elected city commissioner, what would be your role in making sure Fargo is a welcoming community?
Well, I've worked with some of our more marginalized populations here in Fargo, and I feel there's a lot that we need to be doing to be able to help those neighborhoods. And we're talking a lot about all these different things that Fargo needs, but really, your heart of your city is your neighborhoods. That's where they do the networking. That's where they find out where they fit in a community. That's where they find their resources of what's in the community. And so if we're looking at making Fargo a strong community, we need strong neighborhoods. And we don't have all strong neighborhoods. We have some very weak voices for neighborhoods, and those neighborhoods are some of our more distressed areas where we have, our inclusivity is not necessarily the best that it could be. When we have new Americans, they're being kind of housed in one certain location. We need to be able to spread that. The other is, is that I think Fargo is a progressive city. From growing up here to coming back with my family, I am so thankful that my kids have had the opportunity to grow up in multiple places, but more importantly, most of their time growing up has been here in Fargo. And my children have servants' hearts and to serve a community. So they look for things that they can do to help their community. And I think that's what we need to be doing with our neighborhoods, is helping them see how they can help themselves.
Thank you. And Dave?
So I think it's obviously very important that we're a welcoming city. The thing that, so last year, I was recalled for asking the question, "How much money are we spending on refugees?" And so that question is, are we doing a good job? Are we, are they achieving? Are we doing stuff to make sure that they are down the road, living the American dream? And so it was very interesting to me that I was vilified for asking where our tax money's going. And I think that was not a good sign. I think it's very important, I'm sure you already know these numbers, but we're number two per capita in refugee location, and in North Dakota, 80% of them are sent to Fargo. And so it's having an impact on our economy. And so we need to know, first of all, how much money are we spending? And second of all, are we spending it well? Should we be, should we be doing it a different way? And to me, that was not a good sign when you started asking questions, and basically you were bullied and vilified. So to me, that was not exactly being acceptable to all viewpoints. Thank you.
Thank you. Narlette?
Yeah, for sure. The new Americans are having an economic impact on our community, and it's in a positive way, in that our workforce is not growing as large as our economy, or as quickly as our economy is growing. We need people to be working in jobs. So we need to be welcoming whoever wants to reside here, and that includes all new Americans. I do think that the city has an obligation, however, to look at some of the issues. And one of them is, I've heard a lot of concern expressed about the insecurity new Americans have with housing. Because they are new to the community, new to the culture, they may not understand their rights, and they're being threatened, basically. You do something, you're going to get kicked out, and you're going to be homeless. So making sure that housing and healthcare access, all of those things are existing for those individuals. I do think that the city also could play a role in looking at their own processes, making sure that access points to city services is clear and open to everyone and is inclusive. That probably also includes looking at hiring practices and starting to hire people of color and of diverse backgrounds.
Yeah. Yeah, being a welcoming community, people are our greatest asset, and we get better, the more diverse we are. When we look at the, how the, it coincides, whereas Lutheran Social Services has been bringing in more people, and we've been getting more people from around the world, our national recognition and our ratings has gone up. Our desirability as an economic development place, as the mayor said earlier, one of the things is place. These people that are talented and smart... place. These people that are talented and smart can go anywhere in the world. They want to come here. And we're getting, it used to be the brain drain. Now we're getting, when you look at the census where people are moving from, they're from cities that we used to lose to, like Portland, Oregon, and Minneapolis, Hennepin County. When people move out of Minnesota from Hennepin County, the number one place they move is Fargo, North Dakota. So we're winning the brain drain race. And part of that is because we're a welcoming, diverse community, but also because we're a community where you can have an impact on your environment and make change if you believe it. And that's part of community and that's what makes us strong.
Thank you. Linda?
Thank you. You know, if you walk through any one of our school buildings today, you would not believe the diversity of our student bodies. And they're learning from each other. It's, they're going to show us the way. This next generation is already showing us the way of what it is, what it is to live in a truly diverse culture. I grew up in Jamestown, North Dakota, which was even less diverse than Fargo decades ago. So we have a lot of learning to do as those of us who are longtime residents to understand what it means to welcome folks of other cultures and expand our own horizons. The one thing I will note is, it's a good thing to ask questions, without a doubt. But if you think of what, not only what new Americans are bringing to our community, but who is actually, when you talk about where the money is being spent, I would say the public dollars that are being spent on resettlement are primarily in the school district, with the ELL classes, with the adult classes, with the navigators, with the social workers. And that's kind of the front lines of helping these families resettle. And they're doing an amazing job and really seeing it as an overall benefit. But sometimes, you know, you have to be able to take yes for an answer. And when the answer comes back, that it's an overall positive and not a negative, you have to at least show up to the meeting to hear that result.
Thank you. And the topic of welcoming communities, Tim?
Thank you. When I was in the legislature, I pushed for ELL funding because really the schools in many respects are the front line for new Americans. Not only do the children learn to speak the language and learn the language in writing and other ways, but they teach their parents, which again, gives them a foot up when it comes to getting into the workforce and being successful as you move forward. But there's also a lot of things that each and every one of you and the city needs to inspire people to do in terms of personal responsibility. And that can go much farther than any government or government agency can ever do. It could be, you know, the August block parties we have on my block. It could be specialty markets, which are a private entity. But those help welcome people. The Rotary, Rotary International has an international student picnic. Things like that that help us better understand them and make them feel like they're a little slice of home. If you've ever traveled internationally, sometimes you just beg for a greasy McDonald's burger because you miss that so much. And just think of how these people, sometimes they get tossed here and they have no say in it. But it's a combination. But really, there is a lot of private work that needs to go into this because we need them to prepare for our global world and fill our workforce needs.
Thank you. And Tony?
I think what Tim was talking about, there was a little bit of personal responsibility, right? So, I mean, there's certainly a role for the government to play. But ultimately, I feel welcome in my city. And I feel that other people are welcome in my city because of the people who are here. The people that I hang out with are very welcoming. So I believe Fargo's a great place to come and stay. And I think that that word has gotten out. We have a lot of resources here in Fargo. We have more resources here in Fargo than anywhere else in the state of North Dakota. We have jobs here. People come and stay for the jobs. You know, I think what some people think is that, you know, with LSS, with refugees coming in, things like that, I think what some people will just want is to see at the table for us to have a conversation about how many should come in? Is it too little? Not enough? I'm not saying that there is too much or not enough. But all five commissioners, when that topic came up on that day, agreed that LSS and the City of Fargo and, you know, all the other agencies around, should at least talk about the issue and have that conversation. Not to say that we dictate how many come or don't come because it's ultimately a federal program, but at least give us a heads up. Having that communication, I think, would quell a lot of fears. I think it would answer a lot of questions. And we get on the front end of it instead of the back end and have some weird conversation about who belongs or who doesn't. So I think we are a welcoming community. I think the commissioners all were on the same page. And I think, you know, ultimately got into an ugly mess, but we have a great community here and people like to stay here.
Thank you. And our next question, we will start with Dave, and that is, should we increase the amount of commissioners to seven? And what are your thoughts on wards?
I think the seven, I think if it goes to a vote, that would be fine with me. The wards, I'll just give you my personal opinion. So Moorhead has the ward system and the mayor's here. And to me, the ward system almost sets up a conflict even before anything happens, where each council member then is responsible for, you know, their primary focus is their ward. And I like our system much better, where all of us, whether it's five or seven, we're supposed to be looking out for the good of the whole city. So that's just my opinion. And I really, I think five is good. And to me, the case has to be made for the change. Because if you look at our city, we are performing very well with our current system. And so to change it, just to make change, I'm not sure that's a good idea. Thank you.
Narlet?
Whether it's five or seven, again, the Election Task Force recommended going up to seven. And it was mainly just because of the number of departments inside the city and how many, basically how many commissions and other committees each of the commissioners up here have to sit on, being a very part-time kind of job. But I think the more important thing, and Dave alluded to it a little bit, is the distribution of the representation. So right now, there are five commissioners, including the mayor. The mayor is considered part of the commission. And out of those five, three live within a very small, like five or six blocks from each other. When I was elected back in the 90s, I was the only commissioner from south of Maine. I truly believe that your perspective is affected by the neighborhood or the area of town in which you live. So having some kind of geographic distribution is important. The county has a system that has, a commissioner has to live inside of a district. I think the county commission works just fine with that. They still have a county-wide perspective, but they have, the residents of that district have much better and direct access to that commissioner. So that's what I would argue for more even.
Thank you. And Mike?
So I'd support seven commissioners. Again, I think that might be on that petition that's going to be with approval voting. As far as wards go, I think that really, you think about it, so you have wards, so everybody's living in a different neighborhood and they're all bankers. I mean, are you getting any diverse interest there? I think really it's about, are you prone to special interests? And, you know, are you, are you community-oriented? So again, I kind of tend to agree with Dave that representing the whole city is important, a broad perspective, not a narrow perspective. And I know that wards can work and there's some merit. But again, it's not a panacea. I don't think there's any problems that are going to be solved with ward systems. I do think that having seven commissioners with our growing population, you can have too many commissioners. That's happened. Moorhead got rid of some commissioners, Grand Forks and Minot. It can be too many and you just don't get enough done. But I think seven could be a real good number.
And Linda?
I would actually echo what a little of both Dave and Mike said. The idea of wanting people from different areas of town to get geographic diversity, it really is only one kind of diversity. And like Mike alluded to, who's to say that all five or all seven aren't of the same socioeconomic group? I think there are many kinds of diversity that would be, that would make governance of Fargo better, to just have a more broad perspective. So whether it's gender, whether it's age, whether it's socioeconomic status, whether it's cultural background, I think everyone who ever sits in one of these chairs tries their best to be as representative of the community as a whole as they can, and to listen to the needs of folks that don't necessarily have the loudest voices. But it can be a challenge. And so does geographic diversity ensure that? I'm not so sure that it does. I wouldn't mind, I guess the consensus is emerging that seven might not be so bad, simply because of the growing nature of our community and how effectively you can be representative and the growing number of portfolios.
Thank you. And Tim, on the question of, should we increase the number of commissioners to seven? And your thoughts on wards?
We should increase the number to seven. I would oppose nine. I would oppose nine. Just so you know that there is an end limit on my good humor here. So, but in part because, like as stated earlier, there are more departments, more portfolios. It's become much more complex even within those departments. But I'm not a ward fan. However, why don't we think about hybridizing what we're doing? If you have five or seven commissioners, you could actually assign them to a region, we'll call it, of the city, and then rotate on an annual basis. So when something's happening in XYZ region, you can say, Mayor Mahoney, what's happening in southwest Fargo? Because that's your zone. And that way you get a better understanding as a commissioner, and then you rotate so you don't become a homer for them. I just think it's a way that you could do that. Because when you're in a ward, the challenge is, much like in the legislature, those lines would likely need to change on a very regular basis because of the extreme growth that's happening in some parts of the city. And you may be a commissioner one year and then not eligible the next. So that's another problem that we encounter with the wards, is that changing line.
Thank you. Tony?
I wouldn't want to be the North Broadway guy in that scenario right now. So, you know, people have said it before, but we represent more people as a city commissioner than state representatives do. I don't think a lot of people know that. So moving to seven makes a lot of sense if we're willing to go to a mixed ward system. Most cities our size, in fact, the vast majority of cities our size, use a system where there's three at large, to include the mayor, and four in wards. That way you get the mix of, so people who are concerned that will only be in our little, in our little pockets, we have three that aren't. For those people who say that I'm not being represented, like the vast majority of people in North Fargo who don't have a representative right now, you have something in your area. So, you know, I get phone calls from all over the City of Fargo and I intend that to continue. And that's because people either agree with me or disagree with me ideologically. It's not because of where I live, it's because of the viewpoints that I espouse during the meetings. If you want more diversity on the commission, wards is the way to do that. For example, the majority of Bootnes people in the City of Fargo live in a specific, a specific area. So, you know, the average, the idea that a new American would get elected is very difficult. We had one run last time and obviously didn't do very well. But if there's a small population for them to appeal to, then that's how you get the more diversity. And, you know, there's actually federal law that once your city gets so big, you have to go to a ward system to allow that diversity to happen. So yes, seven makes sense if you do a mixed system. Five is not a bad thing. The city is running very well. But it only makes sense to move up if we're going to something different.
Yes to seven. Here's why. I think it boils down to language. And I don't think we're quite aware of how insensitive we are when we're talking about this issue. When we represent people, when we say things like, well, we had one run, we are talking about people, not a person, when we say one. We're saying, or I should say, when you say one, you're not talking about the person, you're talking about the group. And when you say one, you take away any individuality of that group. I think it boils down to language and how we ask the questions. I think that's why you got a lot of people that were upset. Personally, myself, that's why I chose to run. I went to many of the city commission meetings and was quite left, quite disappointed in the language that was being used. The other thing that made me disappointed was that the fact that we're not realizing that it's coming from one point of view. When you say that the people I hang out with are welcoming, that's your point of view. But there are many point of views in the city. And that's why I want to run for city commission, because I have experience working with families and working with people who are marginalized in this community. When we talk about people in our community being inclusive, it's not just new American. It's our LBGT. It's our, our low-income families. It's more than just new American. And those voices are not being heard.